Hello and welcome to the June 22 meeting of the Florissant City Council. Please stand and join the council in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. Before we begin, if there is anyone who wishes to make a comment at the hearing from citizens portion of the meeting, please fill out a yellow card located on the table and hand it to Mr. Hassel. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Jones?
Here.
Egan is absent. Caputa?
Here.
Childruth?
Here.
Hanky?
Here.
Pagano?
Here.
Schmidt?
Here.
Sayam?
Here.
Lee?
Let the record reflect a quorum as present. Next will be the approval of minutes. Mr. Lee makes the motion to approve the minutes of the council meeting from June 8, 2015, seconded by Mr. Hanky. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Let the record reflect approval of the meeting minutes. Next, we will have accommodations. Commendations. Mayor chief?
We need to do the work session minutes.
They weren't done here.
Okay.
So I did not do that.
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
In addition, I made Rick Fath was promoted to lieutenant and Chris Schelling was promoted to sergeant. Anyway, wanted to thank everybody here this evening, like the mayor and the city council for allowing us to be here tonight. We are the first order of business, we have a commendation for Officer Lori Mann and Officer Mark Lothrige if Lori wants to come up. Officer Lothrige is not with us this evening. He's actually vacationed in Florida. Probably a little nicer than being here, but you know. But Lori's being commended for her actions during an incident that happened where a 15-year-old young man was threatening his family with a knife. Officer Mann, Officer Lothrige responded and they were able to defuse the situation and send the young man to the hospital for evaluation. Karen?
On April 10, 2015, Officer Lothrige and Officer Bethman responded to a call of the juvenile in a violent crisis situation that was armed with a knife on Spring Drive. Upon arriving at the address, the officers were advised by the juvenile's family that the 15-year-old juvenile was armed with a knife and threatening them. The juvenile was screaming out the front window and the family advised the officers that they had been attempting to get him to mental treatment. The juvenile continued to scream out the front window and displayed the knife threatening anyone who would enter the residence. Following the officers securing of the scene and making sure the family was safe, the officers began to talk to the juvenile and build a rapport. After an extended period of time, Officers Lothrige and Bethman were able to convince the juvenile to put down the knife and surrender. He was then conveyed by ambulance under officer escort to a local hospital where he was admitted for psychiatric evaluation. Because of their professional handling of this violent situation and their ability to restore calm in an agitated armed juvenile, no one was injured and the distraught juvenile was able to receive professional mental help. For their excellent handling of this event, they are officially commended.
Lori, you can stay up here or if you want to bring our new friend up. We have another award we want to get out of this evening. It's a certificate of appreciation to one of our citizens. It's kind of a two-part really thanking her for her service. The first part was after August 9 last year during Ferguson crisis, Sherry Opich, she jumped on board like a lot of citizens did, helping out the police, helping out law enforcement, helping out firefighters by getting donations, bringing them to the police station, the command post in Ferguson or Clayton. But Lori, or I'm sorry, but Sherry really stepped up. She really took control of that and was able to get a lot of donations, not just to the city of Florissant Police Department, but the command post in Ferguson and Clayton. And really without Sherry's work, I think, with Sherry's work, it really made things a lot easier for the officers to deal with the situation. So we really appreciate her for that. And the second thing is, is that Sherry is a former St. Louis County police officer and Sherry was married to a former St. Louis County police detective, Ed Opich. And unfortunately, Ed had passed away after a bout with cancer. And so one thing that Sherry had always wanted to do was she wanted to have a canine dog named in the honor of her ex-husband, Ed Opich. So she donated our new canine officer, Eddie, to the police department. And Lori Mann, Officer Mann, or Bethman will be her Eddie's handler. And I could tell you this, Eddie has really been an inspiration to a lot of people. Has been a morale booster at the police department. And I gotta tell you, it's been just a great donation. And Eddie always steals the show.[462.84][462.84](laughing) So if I can have Sherry step forward and Karen will read the certificate to her.
Okay. Certificate of appreciation for Sherry Opich. The Florissant Police Department wishes to express a sincere thanks to Ms. Sherry Opich for her tireless efforts and significant contributions to the police department, the Florissant Police Department. Ms. Opich worked many hours collecting food contributions and many essential needs for the officers working the Ferguson unrest. Her many hours spent, so much, her many hours meant so much to our officers who worked long hours during this extended detail. Ms. Opich has also been a good friend of our department and was instrumental in the development of our new canine service dog program. She helped find, select, and pay for Eddie, the newest addition to our canine program. Thanks to her help, Eddie has been a wonderful ambassador for the Florissant Police Department. We would like to officially thank and commend Ms. Opich for her tireless work and dedicated assistance to the Florissant Police Department.
Yeah, I just want to thank Sherry and this has been a wonderful blessing for the department. The morale has really been improved by the presence of this puppy. And we really appreciate the thoughtfulness that you've had, not only with this, but all your other efforts to help our department. You've always really showed a lot of care about those who serve and we appreciate that. We have a lot of citizens that feel that way. We have a very faith-based, patriotic community that really appreciates the law enforcement community of not only Florissant, but all the law enforcement community that serves the St. Louis area. We're very fortunate to have the leadership that we have in our department. We're very proud that the city of Rolla saw fit to hire one of our captains to be their new chief of police. Sean Fagan was the first person that I promoted when I became mayor in 2011. And so I'm very proud of his work and very proud of our department for developing a chief of police for another community. And also all the individuals that have been promoted this time around and all the other promotions that we've made, I think our department has been made very, very strong. And we're in a real great leadership position in our police department to continue the tradition of excellence that have been an example, not just for our department, for other departments in the region. And it's just setting a standard that's going to help all departments excel, especially in these challenging times. Thanks, Chief, and everybody and your leadership team for everything that you do to keep us safe.
It's proud, it's very proud that my family presents you Eddie Courtney Quinnless of Lindy Kennel. And he's named after Rick Quinnless, who was one of the first St. Louis city canine officers who lived in the city of Florissant and his four other brothers who also served on the St. Louis Police Department. And he's named after my husband, Edward, who loved kids and loved dogs and loved law enforcement. And then also my dad, who was military police, because without these people in my life, I would not be in law enforcement. And I thank the city of Florissant for giving me this opportunity to give you guys a community service dog that's going to be pettable, going to go into schools, going to go into nursing homes, and be part of the police department. Thank you.
The next item in the agenda is the 2015 Beautiful Home Awards.
Would the entire council come up? I'd like for you to be involved in giving the award to the recipient from your different wards.
Let me up here by myself.
Our first one will be from Ward 1. Oh, okay. Why don't you introduce yourself?
Okay. Ma'am? Hi, my name is Debbie Bryant and I'm going to be calling out the wards for all of the winners tonight. So from Ward 1, address is 1410 Verlin Bob and Pam Geis. Please come on down. Oh geez. Sorry.
Hi, thank you very much. My pleasure. Hi, how are you? Good. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You help with the yard work.
From Ward 2, 95 Eldorado Ryan and Renee Price. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you.
From Ward 3, 1800 Levine Ted and Diana Sokoya. From Ward 4, 1640 Tyson Drive Orville and Marcella Williams. From Ward 5, 26 Jane Drive Olivia Carroll. From Ward 6, 502 North Lafayette Mary and Denny Herbst. Ward 7, 1075 South Matthew Matt and Kristen Binings. From Ward 8, 645 Willshire Hilda Hope. From Ward 9, 3375 Park Chateau Robert and Gloria Holliday. From Ward 6, in the mayor's choice, 111 Lou St. Catherine's Nelson and Gretchen Crank.
I just want to congratulate all the recipients of this year's Best Home Awards. This is something that we do every year to celebrate homeownership and the maintenance of the fine homes in our community. And the example that you guys set is a great one and hopefully the neighbors are paying attention. But we really appreciate the example of good maintenance of your homes and it makes our city beautiful. Thank you.
Next, we will have the hearing from citizens. Anyone who is interested in speaking is requested to complete a yellow speaker card located at the table. Please understand that this is not a question and answer period. If you want a personal response, please see myself or another council member after the meeting. I guess I'll wait till they leave. Keep an eye on them. First, Kevin O'Donnell. Please state your name and the address for the record.
Good evening, council, ladies and gentlemen, lady and gentleman. Anyway, I'm here this evening to speak about Bill 9104, which I know is, I could have waited until the time to speak on it, but I figured it's going to be tabled, so I may as well speak on it now. My question about it, my feelings about it is, I think that it's highly irregular to even bring this up in the first place because as of 2007, there was another subdivision that was over in Ward 5 that was, it was going through the same thing. It was on private property. It was for a private person and it was for a private subdivision. And it doesn't seem to me that people, the council at the time, I don't know all who was, how many viewers were on it back then, but the vote was against it or for it, seven votes to two. And the votes that went for, that went, they said that there was opposition about it due to the fact, according to the Post-Dispatch, Brian Flinchbaugh's account, he said that there was a confrontation between about, this is going to really set precedence. And that was back eight years ago. And we're going to postpone this another two weeks or so until people forget about it. Well, I'm not going to forget about it. So, and it was eight years ago that the mullering subdivision was appropriated funds, city funds, and I don't think that was necessary either. But the same person who appropriated, who brought up the bill on that was condemning me on social media, saying I was lying, I got things wrong and everything else. And I don't, I don't believe in telling anything but facts that I read. And this to me is just mullering all over again. And then after you, after this gets fixed, this will set a precedence for the next one. And how much time do I have?
About a minute.
Okay. Huh?
About a minute.
Okay, thank you. I was, I'll skip the other thing I was going to bring up, but I just believe that in order for people to be aware of what's going on in Florissant, $28,000 for 28,100. The bill says that they're going to repair, okay? Mr. Gerald says in his memo, they want to repair and then later on in his memo says replace. So there's a difference between repair and replace. The wording of it is even iffy, is the way I see it. And I just believe that anybody who doesn't get up, citizens don't get up to speak about this wasteful spending on private things and then charging residents for fees on their properties to pay for this stuff, it's just ludicrous. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. O'Donnell. State rep Keith English. Please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you very much. State Representative Keith English, I represent the 68th District, 405 South Castello. Ms. Pagano, I moved to your ward several months ago and what a beautiful ward you have. I wanted to come here this evening because last, after last meeting, I received a letter in the mail from Mr. Tommy Sayam's attorney wanting to know if I was married or not. And I wanted to introduce my wife. We just got back and I apologize for our dress. We just came from Mexico about an hour ago, but Kelly, if you could stand, Kelly English, my wife, we got married this weekend. Give her a round of applause.[1534.41][1534.41](applause) But it's always good to be home and being an extended family as you are, and I love working with each and every one of you, I wanted to introduce my wife as, I'm sure she'll be helping me with all the homework in the near future. But thank you very much for the opportunity to speak before you this evening.
Thank you and congratulations. Next, we have communications. Seeing that there are none, clerk advises that there are no communications. The next, we will have public hearings. This item has been withdrawn by the petitioner. So we'll move on to old business, which is second readings. Second reading, 9104. Which we move to postpone? Mr. Schmidt moves to postpone?
Yes.
Tabled. Okay, seconded by Mr. Childruth. All in favor?
Aye.
Bill tabled. And then we have Bill number 9105. Mr. Childruth makes a motion for a second reading, seconded by Mr. Lee. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Clerk, please read the bill for a second time.
Ordinance authorizing appropriation of $270,000 from the Park Improvement Fund to account number 0961 Capital Editions for the replacement of the ball field lights and light poles on Fields 3 and 7 in St. Ferdinand Park.
Mr. Lee makes a motion for a third reading, seconded by Mr. Hanky. All in favor?
Opposed.
Opposed. Clerk, please read the bill for a third time.
Ordinance authorizing appropriation of $270,000 from Park Improvement Fund to account number 0961 Capital Editions for the replacement of the ball field lights and light poles on Fields 3 and 7 in St. Ferdinand Park.
Prior to a final vote being taken on this issue, is there anyone in the audience who would like to make a comment?
John Engelmeyer, 1281 Graham Road, Florissant. This evening, Bill number 19105, I'm here to discuss the procedures and policies of the purchasing for this appropriation of $270,000 underneath Capital Editions. I wrote an email back in April 29, addressing it to the city, and what is a capital expenditure and what is professional services by definition of this city? So far, I have not received a response. This evening, $270,000 appropriate, and I'm not against that, by the way. I think we need it, we got to get it done. But underneath the purchasing procedures, C-6.4, purchasing procedures of our own charter dictates on how things should be done. I don't believe this is the correct procedure. We need to go through bidding. I went to the bid site, purchasing site today, and the last bid that went out was trailer mounted light tower. There's nothing on here on lights for the city park. And I attended the work session, I heard the discussion, and I understand it. But yet, the other hand is the procedures are not being followed. We appropriating money on an if? What's the RFPs? Where's my proposals? Where's my bid openings? There's other companies out here. Who is the company we're going to assign this money to? Is this already done? Is this a sealed deal? This is terrible. Totally un, I mean, disgrace- already done? Is this a sealed deal? This is terrible, totally un, I mean disgraceful in terms of what I've read here in the city charter, and we're passing this tonight with a give-me? Now, if you can answer the questions while I'm here, I would appreciate it. Who is going to get $270,000 for lights for my park? I'm a citizen. I deserve some information. I cannot find anything, even in your work session. $270,000 was appropriated, and that was what discussed, but there was nothing in terms of who the contractor is and how we're bidding on this. And the procedures state that. Read it for yourself. C-Dash-Six Point Four, purchasing procedures. This comes off of Six-Twenty-Two-Fifteen. I pulled it off the website. Could anyone answer the questions? Oh, that's right, the council's mute on this, because we don't expect answers from our elected officials. This administration is terrible, and the city council's going along with it, and that's despicable.
Clerk, please pull the console.
Jones?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Childress?
Yes.
Hanky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Sayam?
Yes.
Lee?
Bill Ninety-One-O-five becomes ordinance number Eighty-One-Forty-Nine. Under new business, we will have board appointments. Seeing none, bills for the first reading, Bill Ninety-One-O-six.
Ordinance authorizing the mayor of the City of Florissant to enter into a contract with St. Louis County, Missouri, to provide for its city's participation in the multi-jurisdictional drug task force for the year beginning July One, Two Thousand Fifteen.
Mr. Schmidt makes a motion for a second reading. Seconded by Mr. Sayam. Discussion. All in favor? Clerk, please read the bill for a second time.
Ordinance authorizing the mayor of the City of Florissant to enter into a contract with St. Louis County, Missouri, to provide for the city's participation in the multi-jurisdictional drug task force for the year beginning July One, Two Thousand Fifteen.
Mr. Caputa makes a motion for a third reading. Seconded by Mr. Jones. Clerk, please pull the console.
Jones?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Childress?
Yes.
Hanky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Sayam?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Ord, sorry. Ordinance authorizing the mayor of the City of Florissant to enter into a contract with St. Louis County, Missouri, to provide for the city's participation in the multi-jurisdictional drug task force for the year beginning July One, Two Thousand Fifteen.
Prior to a final vote being taken on this issue, is there anyone in the audience that would like to make a comment? Seeing none, please, clerk, pull the console.
Jones?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Childress?
Yes.
Hanky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Sayam?
Bill Number Ninety-One-O-six passes and becomes ordinance number Eighty-One-Fifty. Next, we will have council announcements. Mr. Hanky?
Yes, good evening. This Wednesday is the Wednesday Night Out with Florissant Old Town Partners and the city. There's going to be a plaque dedication in front of Six-Ten St. Francis Court. He's right down the street down here for, it's a walk, Twenty-Second Walk Through History plaque honoring Frank and Josephine Cordy. That's six o'clock this Wednesday, kickoff Wednesday Night Out, right down the street here. Also, this Thursday, the food truck night has been rescheduled for this Thursday night down at the bottom of the hill at Old St. Ferdinand's, but that's this Thursday evening, the food trucks, and I, just as a reminder, please try to remember to bring along some canned goods for the team food pantry to it. Thank you.
Mr. Childress?
Thank you, Mayor and President. I would like to remind the residents of Wards Five, Seven, Eight, and Nine of our annual picnic on Thursday, June Twenty-Fifth, at Dunigan Park from six to eight P.M. Please bring your lawn chairs, and we're looking forward to having a good time. I would like to congratulate Ms. Sherry Opich on her certificate of appreciation and for all her hard work. I would also like to thank the Citizens Participation Committee, especially Terry Rider, for her hard work with this project. Thank you.
Mr. Jones?
Yes, I'd like to say my usual. You guys, please take time. Fifteen minutes out of your time, a couple canned goods, run it down to team. They need it, morning, noon, or night. They're always in need, you guys. Please water your cats and dogs. The people that call me on the streetlights, it takes a little bit of time, you guys. Ameren is on it. It takes about two weeks for them to get out there, so please have patience with them. And you guys, please start locking your car doors up out in front of your residence. Everybody thinks they get in that comfort zone because you're at home and in your driveway, and we got some not very good people once in a while that comes through, and they want to rummage through the cars. Well, common sense says lock those doors. Please lock them up, and they won't get in your cars. Thanks.
Now, we'll have a message from the mayor, Your Honor.
Thank you, Ms. Vice President. You did a wonderful job today.
Thank you.
Don't worry, Joe. Jackie's here.
I'll be back. That's right.
The Parks Department wants you to know that the Sunset Riverfront Trail is closed until further notice due to the lower portion of the trail being underwater, and after the floodwaters recede, it's going to be necessary for the
Trail to remain closed to allow city staff time to inspect, remove debris and mud from the walking path, and an update will be given when the trail conditions change. That's due to the high water from the Missouri River, obviously. Also, be advised that New Florissant Road and New Halls Ferry Road will be closed for the I-270 repairs beginning July Six, right after the Fourth of July. This is going to be extremely inconvenient. I urge you to go to MoDOT's website or to the city website so you can find a link to a website that's very informational about the closing. They're going to have some lanes on I-270 going westbound. They'll zigzag and use the eastbound lane for westbound traffic, and what they'll do is they'll take traffic off of I-270, off the off-ramp, cross Florissant Roads, which will be closed, and then back onto the on-ramp to continue on. It's going to be slow going in. Sometimes during construction, they'll be down to one lane and stuff like that. So they're going to work around the clock for about a month, get this thing done. It's a new deck for the bridge. It'll give it another ten years of life. It'll do the same thing at New Halls Ferry. Couple months ago, I had a news conference at the Florissant Road Bridge at the same overpass to draw attention to the state of Missouri, the legislature not paying attention to the problem of funding our state highways, and I'm still shouting out, maybe mine's the only voice, but we're going to lose a couple hundred million dollars of federal matching money if the state of Missouri doesn't find a way to collect some money next year to get the $1 match for the $4 of federal funding, and it'll be a disaster for the future maintenance of our highways, and it'll take us a lot longer to catch up than if we try to keep up with it now. This is not to fix any big projects like I-70 from St. Louis to Kansas City. This is just treading water, and we need the legislature to find a way to fund that. The obvious way is to put two cents more on gas tax. It's a user tax, and it's something that we need to have the legislature address. We're going to have Fiesta in Florissant this weekend, Saturday and Sunday, and it'll be from 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. on Saturday, and 11:00 to 9:00 on Sunday. There'll be a opening ceremony at 5:00 p.m. on Saturday, and this is going to be an opportunity to listen to Hispanic music, and there's all kinds of crafts for sale, and also very good, great delicious food. Florissant people love to eat. They love to eat together. That's why we have food truck nights. That's why we have council picnics, and we have all the other activities. Also, we've gotten another recognition, another third-party recognition has recognized the beauty of Florissant, an outfit called Culture Trip. It's a website. It names Florissant one of the ten most beautiful towns in Missouri, and it cites several things that says that Florissant is described as one of the county's, country's most popular retirement communities with over 400 acres of parklands and 20 city parks, and within them, you'll find, you'll be able to find ample recreational activities, and also reports that Florissant is one of the oldest of Missouri's towns, and much of its past can be found within its old town area, which even has the remains of its Spanish and French settlement. So this is another honor that Florissant has. We have a news release out that we just put out today, drawing attention to this honor, and we'll be talking more about that in the next couple of weeks. This is on top of several other third-party recognitions of our beautiful city and a great place to live. Mr. Hanky already talked about Wednesday Night Out, and we're going to have a family fishing tournament on Saturday, this coming Saturday, June Twenty-seventh, at Ferdinand Park, and this will be for all ages, and it's going to be from nine to 11:00. So from sixteen to sixty-five, we'll have the fishing tournament. And on July Fourth, we'll celebrate Independence Day. At Egan Center, we're going to have a fireworks display preceded by the North Winds Concert, but I just kind of wanted to share a little vignette that we discovered the other day, that Florissant's been celebrating Fourth of July, at least, all the way back to 1821, and there's a little vignette in here. It's from, it's from the Missouri Gazette, which was the first newspapers in Florissant, and it says, we, the quote from the paper back in 1821 said, "Plentiful and elegant dinner was provided at which our worthy and long-known fellow citizen Colonel David Music," I believe there's a park named after this guy, "President, and Hugh O'Neill Esquire officiated as vice president. The Declaration of Independence was read by Charles S. Hempstead Esquire, and the day was spent in the greatest hilarity and with great cordiality," just like the ward meeting and picnic that the council members are going to host this Thursday. Thank you.
The next meeting of the Florissant City Council will be on July Thirteenth at 7:30 p.m., and for all your benefits, Mr. Egan will be back. So Mr. Lee makes a motion for adjournment. Seconded by Mr. Sayam. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Council stands adjourned. Thank you for bearing with me.